Family is always available in all seasons. Other than the purchase of a few discs, there's no cost. It's a joyous activity that captures the beauty of our town forest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I can leave you with these.
Please.
Thanks a lot. We'll empty out the room.
Thank you, thank you. All right, super. We'll just give the disco folks a sec to shift.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, I just don't know what the name of the... Okay, so we're gonna settle back down and call up, I believe we have another public comment from Kate Linsmire. There we are. Okay, trio, come on up.
Have a seat. Thank you. Welcome. And just to state your names and organizations.
Sure. I'm Kate Linsmire. I am a town meeting member precinct D. I am also a member of ACT for Needham, a committee for an auditorium and community theater. So I had the pleasure today of attending a vision session for Pollard, for the Pollard Project. It was a very thoughtful session and one of many input sessions that will be happening throughout the summer. In the session today, there was robust discussion and input from participants from past and current students, teachers, administrators, as well as town staff and community leaders. There were common themes within the breakout session, and the one that stood out to me the most was the desire for this new school to be a community asset and a place where all felt welcome. As the project moves in to the exploratory phase and the design phase, I encourage our school committee, the PBBC, all town leadership, to fast-track and prioritize an auditorium and theater space that is up-to-date and right-sized for this community. As you know, there were opportunities missed during the high school remodel, and we're now dealing with costly stopgaps and trying to work around years of deferred maintenance to make our current but outdated and subpar facilities work for the community. As you may also be aware, there are other communities like Waymouth who have received MSBA funding for their middle school projects that contain an up-to-date theater and theater-adjacent classrooms. So this allowed them to support and expand their curriculum within these spaces, and the middle school is also highly utilized by community groups. It brings in about $100,000 annually in additional rental revenue, and that supports ongoing maintenance costs and staffing needs. While this project can feel like a Goliath, right? I think we've all seen some of the preliminary numbers, we know it's going to be big. The intentional planning from the school's master plan avoids building costly swing spaces for the future and critical Mitchell project, and it's also the lowest cost, shortest duration, and the most square footage of all the possible scenarios. We feel that a right-sized auditorium within Pollard would support the needs of our community as well as provide a stage upon which our students can shine.
My name is Miles Yance. I live at 14 Hillset Avenue in Needham, and I'm a rising junior at Needham High School. I participate in three NHS theater shows every year. Our shows sell out the Newman and High School auditoriums frequently, to the point where I've seen mothers and children turned away from the auditoriums since there wasn't enough room for them to see the show. Additionally, as a performer, our 70- to 80-person cast must fit into two small offices that act as makeshift dressing rooms during rehearsals and performances. And if you know anything about the smell of teenage boys in a hot auditorium, you'll understand why having a space with proper dressing rooms and bathrooms is necessary. Every other auditorium I've been to in the state is miles ahead of ours. For example, when our a cappella groups perform at other high schools, or when I travel to other schools for speech and debate or other extracurricular activities I do, I can see the massive difference in sound quality and size between the large, up-to-date auditoriums of other towns and our smaller, outdated auditorium space. Between the hundreds of people in our music programs, the hundreds of people involved with theater, the four a cappella groups, the classes that take place in the auditorium, the events that are held in the auditorium, and the many other uses for that room, the entire Needham Public Schools community will benefit from a performance center that has the space and technology to support our thriving program. This is our chance to follow through on a needed project that we failed to consider when renovating the high school. We don't rebuild a school every year, so this is a chance we haven't had in a while and probably won't have for a long time after this, if ever. I support creating a functional and higher-quality auditorium for Pollard as part of the renovations. If we do this correctly, the space can be a revenue stream for the town while also serving the needs of the community.
My name is Louisa Kraus. I live at 66 Hennwell Street in Needham. I'm a rising sophomore at Needham High School, and I've been involved in tech for theater since 7th grade. I'd like to start by saying that the productions that we work on here in Needham, both at the middle and high school levels, are a big part of our culture and arts as a town. Thousands of audience members, from proud parents to students to others in the community, attend our six shows each year between Pollard and NHS, including the charity-based Sam Show. Our productions provide opportunities for students to develop leadership skills and responsibility, especially through our many tech crew roles, which begin at Pollard and continue through the high school. In fact, the qualities developed over the years by our tech crew participants mirror those included in the Portrait of a Needham Graduate. As a stage manager, I'm very familiar with the issues that our current facilities pose. Even at Needham High School, the auditorium that is meant to be utilized for our productions can't meet our needs with its finicky sound system, lack of a back-of-house lighting board, and cramped space. This forces us to move to a whole different school, Newman, for most of our performances, which has its own challenges, as we're just borrowing it from the elementary school programs. I also have experience as a member of the pit orchestras that provide music for the musicals at the high school, which are typically crammed awkwardly to the side or in front of the stage, even possibly compromising emergency exits because of the lack of space. I hope we can take advantage of this exciting opportunity to transform our Pollard space. Thank you.
Thank you all. Excellent. All right, so we're moving on to a public hearing on recycling and transfer station user fees and charges, so I'll invite up the Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Advisory Committee, Dave Davison, Karis Lustig, Celia Simczak, and Matt DeMaris. Hi, y'all. How you doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you.
This is not solid waste, but for another agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so let's hear about the recommended changes for the RTS rates and charges. Who's gonna fill us in?
Madam Chair, the Solid Waste Advisory, Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Advisory Committee met with town staff and reviewed the recommendations, to which the Chair of the Committee will speak to the Board in just a moment. There are only three rate changes being recommended. They are specifically to do with disposal of box springs or mattresses or truck tires. And the reason for those changes is the cost of disposing the items is more than what we're currently charging, and that's just the fee for the disposal of the item, not the other costs such as transportation, staff, handling as such, but just that basic fee. There are no recommendations to change any of the common fees, the solid waste disposal, bag fees, and part of the reason for that is, as the Board is aware, there is a study being done with the RTS operations, and recommendations will be coming forth, so we thought it prudent to hold off on making the changes, proposed changes, until we have a better sense of what the Board will be asked to consider in the future. And with that, I'd turn it over to the Chair, Mr. Heller.
Mr. Chair.
So, you know, these are just two things that we're trying to catch up on, to, you know, bring up even, you know, but we're not looking at all of the fees, but we've made a commitment since last year to, you know, review them, you know, more than annually and not let them get too ahead of ourselves with having to catch up. So these are just, you know, catching up to, you know, changing fees in the market. We've talked about mattresses for years. You know, the fees for mattresses were historically very low because we had a grant, and that took care of the, and so the fees were just minimal because most of those costs were covered, but those grants have long expired, and so we've been covering those costs, and there are regulations around how you have to do a lay-in with mattresses as well. And then also, we got a little bit for the commercial, because, you know, anytime you have a good deal, someone finds out, and, you know, and something that's designed for a fee schedule for citizens, you know, is not certainly designed for, you know, the industrial dropping off of mattresses. So that was sort of our discussion, and the vote was unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have any comments?
For everyone, could you just state the changes, the proposed changes in the fees?
Sure. So we had, the commercial mattresses were $20, and we did a cost analysis just of the truck, the trucking and the labor, and we thought 25 per unit would pretty much level fund that. We had a discussion about, you know, the commercial mattresses and how we, you know, really wanna kind of make sure that outside communities aren't bringing mattresses here through commercial haulers, so it's double for the, for the, you know, commercial entities to 50. And then the truck tires, we really just did a basic cost analysis with fuel charges. We were being charged, after fuel charges, about $21, so that's an increase of $6. But rarely do residents bring in the truck tires, it's usually from a, you know, commercial entity.
Thank you.
True.
Maria?
I don't have any comments. These all seem perfectly reasonable to me, but I look forward to hearing from others.
Sure. Josh, anything?
No, thank you.
Kevin?
All right. How many box springs get tossed? Let me just, give me a number. How many? How many beds are we...
Mattresses in, like, 1,000, like...
Over how, how long?
A year.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Geez.
It's a lot. And it's, they don't, they don't process in a trash facility, they don't, they're not easy to incinerate, and they're bad for landfills, so there's a waste ban, it was from November of '22.
Okay.
There's a waste ban on textiles and mattresses that were included. And so we send them off to a nonprofit called UTEC, which is a youth empowerment company up in Lowell, and they try and keep kids off the streets, you know, give them a workshop environment where they can kind of process the mattresses, and there's actually some value in the foam and in the metal, and if there's wood, they can process that for waste energy, which is, you know, it's kind of, kind of minimal revenue in that, but, you know, it's, it's expanding.
Okay.
More and more, so.
And you know, if you ever had to try and get rid of one, you know, if I'm gonna go to a store, you'll find out what the costs are that they will charge and how difficult it is to get rid of mattresses. Now, may I ask a question? How many, how many times a year is there, like, contamination, someone just tosses one in the dumpster?
Well, it's not contamination that they throw in the dumpster, it's contamination with, like, maybe bedbugs or something, or if they're really wet.
But I mean...
Yeah, yeah. They're not...
Serious conversation.
Okay, hang on, things are getting out of control here.
It's a trash disposal, that'd be...
I do want to just check with our colleague online. Kathy, do you have any comments to add?
The only thing I would add is that you also cannot donate them, so this is an important service that the RTS is doing.
Excellent. And then Marianne, you have...
Well, I was just gonna flag, the reason you probably can't donate them is if you're getting 1,000 a year, I'm not sure how many beds there are in Needham, but a lot, right? In theory, mattresses last 10 years. I'll just say. You do the math.
Yeah.
We're under, under removing mattresses in that sense.
All right. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the room or anyone online who would make, like to make a comment about the change in rates, now is the time. Raise your hand, or otherwise.
No hands up right now.
Okay, I don't see anyone. All right, so there is no vote that we have to take this time, so does anyone have any other comments before we close the public hearing?
People are welcome to continue to submit comments to us.
Of course. Yes, we'll be voting on this at our next meeting in...
July 22nd.
Two weeks. Thank you.
Okay.
July 22nd, thank you. Thank you for putting in the work. Appreciate it.
Making recommendations. We look forward to the study.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Okay. All right, we have a very exciting and momentous celebration. We are, we have been so lucky and so fortunate to have our longtime town manager with us, and now is the time for Kate to be terribly uncomfortable while we all say nice things about her. It is so far from over. Before I pass it along to my colleagues, I will just say for myself that I've just been so happy to get the chance to work with you. You are a legend in local government circles and lots of other places as well. Your contribution to the profession in general and to the town of Needham in particular just really can't be overstated. Your influence on women in government and men too has really brought a level of talent and competence to Needham that few other towns experience, and that in turn has led to a period of longevity and stability for this town that we are very lucky to have had. You have seen it all and weathered every storm, and you have set our table with a thoroughness that is thoroughly Kate. So as you prepare to go on to your next adventure, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you for your work and your example and your time and your heart. And I'll open it up to my colleagues, if anyone wants to speak. Kevin?
Okay. So when I first ran for select board, they went to like, "Oh, you'll be fine, I'll be great, as, as long as Kate doesn't retire." And I heard that a lot, enough that after I, I won the seat, I met with Kate and was actually very concerned, so we sat down, we talked, and the first thing I said is, "Are you gonna retire?" And she looked stunned, like, "Uh, no." But it turns out, everyone was right. Everything was fine when Kate's around. You do a great job, you're level-headed, everyone in town sleeps easy at night, even on old box springs, because you're in charge, you're running the show, and it's so appreciated. You are, Kate's extremely level-headed, she is gracious, she knows, she's forgotten more than I will ever learn about municipal government, and the other thing is she's incredibly curious. You are always looking at things, new things in new ways all the time, and it's, it's a great example, it's a great, it's a great organization because of Kate. So thank you very much. You're tremendous.
Absolutely. I'm gonna go to Kathy online.
Yes, so I tried to think of one really good Kate story, and there wasn't one, you know, because, Kate, you're just so consistently great, and I just want to say, Kate, that you're a treasure. We have been so lucky to have you, and not only, I'm gonna speak in third person because I think I might make Kate uncomfortable, but not only does she know everyone and everything, but Kate can find a solution to the thorniest problems. And along the way, she understands all of our quirks and works with all of us with the utmost tact and consideration, and I have always really appreciated the perspective that Kate brings to every situation. You know, she's seen everything, but she still remains optimistic, and she loves to laugh, so what a wonderful person to work with, and I feel just so fortunate to have had this time working with Kate. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I want to give some historical background, and this stuff I only learned recently. So you joined as the personal director in Needham on March 5th, 1990. Those were some dark times in Needham when you joined. Financial troubles, very decentralized government structure. You came in, and two months later, we had a town meeting that was described by our moderator at the time as the most difficult in his experience, with budgets moving around...
To June.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. The minutes are really interesting to read. And here, some highlights from that year of the Personnel Department. These are highlights. Coordination with other municipal governments to provide low-cost training for managers in layoff situations and outplacement counseling for laid-off employees. That was a highlight, that was a really hard time. You came in and you really turned things around. I mean, we, I can't remember the last time we've ever had layoffs in Needham. That was the last time, exactly. And over time, the government structure changed, the Personnel Department, the Personal Director moved to the Select Board, and then when you became Town Manager in that 2004, 2005 time, when we changed our charter, that was another big change. The professional staff was centralized under the Town Manager, and you led that, and over that time, you have hired almost every person that currently works here.
All but seven.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, good.
I can tell you who they are, too.
So, over the time, the town has changed with you. The town has seen so much change, and you have directed so much change in this town, and we are so grateful for that, and we are very scared of what's gonna happen after, but we know we're in good hands, so thank you.
My family will tell you I hate change, so that's, that's a high praise indeed, thank you, Josh. Here I am. So, so Kate, I don't want to have this discussion, you know that, and I have said, I'm thinking back to that famous meeting that we had with Katie and Marcus, Chair-Vice Chair meeting a few years ago, and we said something about when Kate retires, and Marcus popped up his head and said, "What do you mean, when Kate retires?" And we said, "Well, in two years or three years," whatever it was at the time, "when Kate retires." And Marcus said, "She's gonna retire?" And I said, "Yeah, she is, and I'm gonna leave two nanoseconds afterwards." And Marcus and Katie both sat there and went, and then Marcus said, "Is this the point where Katie and I just curl up in fetal position on the floor and cry?" And Kate and I just laughed. So, so I can't even, like, really talk about this, which is why I made you cookies, you know, because, because I can't really talk about this, so, so I did the cookie thing. We have a huge, long history, and history is important, and one of the things about history that, that Josh didn't even get to is, if you say, "I know this happened at some point," 10 seconds later, Kate has, like, a copy of the page to you and with her notes on it from what happened, and it's been like, a picture, here you go, this is, this is what happened then, and knowing all that history is huge and is so helpful as we're trying to move forward. So the most important thing to know about Kate is that she has set all of us up for success going forward, and despite the fact that we are really sad that she's leaving, we are prepared and we're ready to go. So thank you, Kate.
I'm gonna call up Matt Borelli. Uh-oh.
Good evening.
Former selection.
Madam Chair and the Board, so thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. As a member of this Board for 12 years and on the Finance Committee for three years before that, I've had the pleasure to spend a lot of time with Kate, both personally and professionally. Kate, I thoroughly enjoyed working with you. You are a gifted manager, and your incredible work ethic, loyalty, and humility were always noticed. Your ability to make us on the Board look good all the time. You genuinely care not just about the team, but about its players. I remember when I was first elected, you called me the day of the meeting, not to discuss the agenda, to make sure that I knew to wear a tie, both to avoid my embarrassment and to respect the culture of the Board at the time. Of course, of course, I told you, "Don't worry, I'm coming from the Finance Committee." Your ability to respect five different lenses and viewpoints and make time for all of us made us a team, and you were the best teammate. You coined the name Team Needham, and as a town, we have also not been shy about using acronyms and abbreviations under your leadership. To speak in team code in other towns looking in might feel boxed out. For example, I can hear you saying, "Tonight, the PBBC is meeting at the PESAB, but first you have to go to FinCom, then DRB, then the COA, before TMAC. I'll see you tomorrow at the BOH meeting at the CAF, not the RRC." And most importantly, we need to talk about the JCB and the RTS. When we look around at how Needham has thrived, it is because it has been run as a team, working together towards common goals. Your loyalty is not only to the Board, but to all town employees. It is remarkable, in a world where loyalty and dedication are in short order. Personally, I love collaborating with you on town real estate deals and negotiations. In our discussions over our many $1.06 iced coffees that turned to $1.07 iced coffees after the dreaded meal tax, we would talk about everything from families, travel, and food, to the latest organizational planning system that you were using at the time. We shared passions, but most of all, we shared laughs. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the time we had in China, bringing the success of Needham to Beijing and then bringing their thoughts and ideas back to Needham. Traveling is difficult. Traveling to China is even more difficult, but when you're surrounded by good people, yes, good, and bring enough genes, it makes the experience unforgettable. Now, we all know Kate loves her quotes, so I wanted to continue on the China theme with a couple of Chinese proverbs that many of you have probably heard, definitely Kate has, but they, number one, remind you of Kate's tenure, number two, concern trees, which in Needham, that topic just keeps on giving, and three... and three, it almost makes me look cultured. Almost. So the first one. The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second-best time is now. Kate, you showed us that it's never too late to seize an opportunity, even when you think it has passed you by. Like in 2017, when Town Meeting referred back the land purchase that we needed to help the public safety building. At the time, we thought our opportunity had run out, but with perseverance, in a new round of negotiations, we regrouped, and Town Meeting authorized the purchase at the next town meeting. It has been critical to that site. This is just one example of so many where you have led the charge on the rebuilding of Needham and never given up. The second Chinese proverb that Kate has already probably heard is one generation plants the tree and the other one gets the shade. Kate has spent her career planning for projects for future generations, not just this generation. When you look at our athletic and recreational facilities, there are countless times when people want a project so that they or their families can enjoy it soon, only to lose interest when they find out the timeline of municipal projects. Kate, your long-term vision, planning, and focus on the future has made Needham the best town in this country. Your career is of amazing success. Even though the history that we shared was only a fraction of your career, that fraction made the whole town exponentially better. There was a pun in there that I know some people would appreciate, I think Kevin and the moderator, but maybe not the time. But as you head out to the next chapter, we know you want to have continued success in meeting, and your legacy here will live on as future generations get the shade. Thank you, Kate. And I didn't come here bearing gifts. I have an announcement that I know Kate will appreciate. No, I'm not running again, yet. Instead, I present to you a trust fund being established by your colleagues in your honor. Dave approved this, so I know it's a solid plan. We have all helped raise money for this fund. Please tell me you're surprised. I don't know. It's very hard to keep a secret from Kate, but I will read the fund description for those. It's called the Kate Fitzpatrick Professional Management Trust Fund. This fund will support professional development opportunities for town management-level staff when the operating budget cannot support such training. Kate Fitzpatrick, Needham's first town manager, was dedicated to professional local government management, both in Needham and nationwide, and led town government prudent fiscal administration. This fund supports her legacy by providing a means to foster continual growth of professional management talent in service of Needham even during periods of necessary fiscal restraint. We have already raised thousands of dollars for this fund, and we are looking forward to growing this fund both in the short and long term. So congratulations again to you and for this legacy fund.
Thank you. That's perfect. Thank you, Matt. That was great. I think we're gonna hear from our moderator, potentially? No?
Yes.
You're on my list.
Do you wanna hear?
I do, please.
Can imagine you're a loss for words, Mr. Moderator.
Does that happen?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the Select Board, and our esteemed town manager. My name is Michael Fee, and I am the elected town moderator here in the town of Needham. Miles gave me two minutes to speak, which is less time than somebody from the floor of Town Meeting gets to speak. So I'll try to adhere to that, even though it's gonna be difficult to talk about three decades of work with you, Kate. But let me—I don't want to be presumptuous to the members of the board, but let me be the first to wish everyone a happy Kate Fitzpatrick Day, because it truly is a day to celebrate Kate. It is an absolute pleasure to talk about you and to wish you the ultimate happiness in your retirement. Now, as town moderator, Kate does not work for me. But I have some news for the Select Board as well. I don't believe Kate works for you either, no matter what the charter or the town bylaws say. I have, for a very long time, had the distinct impression that Kate works for the town of Needham. Kate works for the citizens of Needham. Joshua was talking about 1990, my first year on the Finance Committee. It was a doozy. '93 was kind of wild, too. And what's fun about working with Kate all these years is that she and I can be together and actually talk about things that happened then, even though in 1990, you didn't have your current position. And I'm gonna miss being one of two people in the room who actually remember stuff that happened and were there and present to talk about it. But over the course of those 30-some-odd years and my tenure as moderator, I have grown to just harbor the greatest respect for Kate as a public servant, as a person, as an operator and a manager. These are very, very difficult roles to fill, especially in municipal government. And Kate has distinguished herself in each one of those roles. I thought about just a few words that come to mind when I think about you and I think about your work. And one is competence. Just an incredible ability to manage, an incredible ability to relate to people, to navigate difficult issues, and bring expertise to problems within our town. The other word—one of the other words that came to mind was respect. And it has been enjoyable and, in some ways, rewarding to see that the respect that you have for our institutions of government here in the town. And I don't mean that in a capital I, like, you know, Town Meeting or the executive branch or other boards. I mean at every level in our town. Our town has a way of doing things. We are not afraid of change. We've changed over the years. But you have always—and if you don't mind me using the first person with you— you have always had great respect for our institutions in a role that could be occupied by an egomaniac or someone power-hungry or dismissive of checks and balances or dismissive of our structure of town government, which we all know is not the most efficient in the world. But it has—it's not efficient for a reason. What we saw tonight, the public input, the listening. You have always embodied that respect. And I have noticed it, and I am deeply grateful for you having done that. Now, I know Miles has me on the clock, so I'll try to accelerate. But the other thought that came to mind in thinking about you was loyalty. I don't know how many people here—I know probably of you have seen the Mass Municipal Association newsletter that comes out and the job openings in the Mass Municipal Association newsletter. And the job openings for town administrators or town managers, they're plentiful. It's a role that people in Needham may not realize in other towns, turns over frequently. And that may happen for a lot of different reasons. But this is not a position that traditionally, in my anecdotal research, has been occupied by the same person for decades and decades and decades. And that was not only due to your superior performance, but it was also due, I believe, to the loyalty and fondness you have for this town. You were not distracted or attracted away by the next shiny thing or a bigger opportunity at a bigger town with a larger population or a larger tax base. Instead, you saw Needham as a work in progress at all times. And I think you worked to improve it every day. And that's to be recognized, because too often, tenures are ephemeral, and we can't remember, who was in the position? What mark did they make? Well, as you heard tonight, and I'm sure you'll hear again, that's not gonna be a question unanswered when it comes to you. And finally, I just wanted to say that you have always been, I think, as a public servant, responsive. You have been attentive, and you've had a long view, which we don't often see in a day when attention spans are short, memories are short, media cycles, to the extent they exist, are short. But you have always been responsive, focused, attentive, and looking to the future. And we heard some of that earlier tonight as well. So from the position of the town moderator, I will say thank you for your service. I will say that I personally will miss you. I know Town Meeting will miss you. We're confident, as has been said, that you've laid a foundation for a successor. And I hope you get to enjoy yourself and do whatever you want, whether it's going back to Dollywood or any of these places that you've traveled. Maybe go over to England again or China with Matt, which would be fun. But don't be a stranger. Come by, visit us at Town Meeting, and I'm sure you'll get a raucous response. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd like to welcome Senator DeRouze.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, members of the public. And of course, thank you to Kate. It's great to be with you this evening as a sort of bittersweet moment that it is. I didn't bring cookies, but that was a good idea. As many of you know, I got my start as an elected official right here in this building, in Town Meeting. And so that is when I first came to know you. And as I've grown in this role, my current role as the state senator, I've been fortunate to work with many talented and dedicated public servants. And I can say with the utmost level of confidence that Kate Fitzpatrick is exemplary. She has brought so much knowledge and wisdom to her role as our town manager here in Needham. When Kate is involved, I never worry because it's always done right, every single time. Kate's ability to bring people together is one of the, I think, most formidable reasons that she's so effective. Everybody knows, she just gets it done. She has an incredible reputation, and it's well-earned and well-deserved. We all know that local politics is an ongoing dance of actively listening, of finding common ground, and leading friends and colleagues through changes. That takes a positive attitude and optimism. And that's what Kate brings. She shows us every day that there are many ways to lead. Like in 2017, when she co-founded the Massachusetts Women Leading Government with several other municipal administrators, a group that includes women in every level of local government, building confidence and skills, opening doors and extending ladders, a true hallmark of Kate's service. She guided Needham through COVID with skill and with sensitivity. Though we were scary and unprecedented times, people found it hard to trust. And Kate's leadership was invaluable. And also, experience was invaluable, especially for me as the chair at that point of the State Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. I don't remember how many times I called Kate, but it was a lot. She consistently strives to be the best town manager that she can be, constantly learning, traveling not only to other towns, but as we already heard tonight, even other countries, to compile best practices and bring those best practices back to us. Kate, this town is stronger for your service. We are stronger, better, because of your service. We will certainly miss your institutional knowledge and this amazing way that you can confidently interpret the intent of a document, because probably you wrote it. But most importantly, we will miss your caring heart, your sense of humor, and your unwavering commitment to excellence. So it is my pleasure to—we're working on— the Senate is only in session on Mondays and Thursdays, and today is Tuesday, which makes the schedule a little challenging. So tonight, I have brought with me an official citation from the Massachusetts Senate, which I will read in a second. And soon after Thursday, when we are back in session, we will be able to adopt an official resolution in your honor, which becomes an official part of the records of the Massachusetts Senate. So at some point, I will make sure to get that to you as well. But here is the citation for this evening. "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Kate Fitzpatrick in recognition of your exemplary 35 years of service and dedication to the town of Needham. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk, although in this case, it's transmitted by me. But in any case, it is indeed signed by our Senate President, Karen Spilka, our clerk, and me as the town state senator dated today, June 24th. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement." There's always a picture moment. Did you want a picture moment? You're good. Okay.
Thank you. Representative Josh Tarski.
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kate, I have something coming to you Thursday. It is a resolution, so—it's not that I came empty-handed, okay? Even though I did come empty-handed. So I haven't known you as long as just about anyone in this room, and I'm not gonna pretend to. So—but one thing I've become accustomed to in my new role, especially with the increased access that I have to leaders in the town and regionally, is evidence of your footprint being just about everywhere. People that I meet both here and regionally have heard of you, and they look to you for guidance, advice, and exemplary performance. I don't have personal stories. I just hear anecdotally all these things. And as someone who just appreciates people who live a life that's well-lived and dedicated to public service, I appreciate what you've done. So I'll keep this short and sweet. I hope you enjoy retirement, and I hope we can stay in touch. So thanks for all that you do. Thanks, everybody.
All right. So I'm gonna go now to Kathy for the reading of our proclamation.
Thanks. Town of Needham, Kate Fitzpatrick Day proclamation. Whereas Kate Fitzpatrick entered service with the town of Needham on March 5th, 1990 as Personnel Director, following five years with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas Kate immediately established herself as a leader, expanding Needham's human resources capabilities and building the foundation that the town's staff culture stands on today. And whereas Kate was appointed Assistant Town Administrator in 1998 and subsequently Town Administrator in 2001, during which time she laid the groundwork for the passage of the Community Preservation Act and Town Manager Act. And whereas Kate was selected as Needham's first town manager in 2005, leading the town with disciplined stewardship and strategic vision, successfully shepherding a generation of capital facility projects to include the Public Safety Headquarters, Emery Grover renovation, Public Services Administration Building, and Town Hall restoration, preserving heritage and enhancing service delivery for all residents. And whereas Kate advanced the local government management profession, mentoring emerging leaders, advocating for ethical excellence, and elevating women in municipal administration across the Commonwealth and the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved that June 26, 2025, be declared Kate Fitzpatrick Day in the town of Needham in honor of Needham's first town manager for a career of selfless service on behalf of Needham and its residents. Signed, this 24th day of June, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All right. We're gonna have a roll-call vote. So I'll start with Kathy.
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Josh?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, and the motion passes. Congratulations.
Okay. I get to say a few words. So as you know, my farewell address will be Thursday at the other event that we have. So I tried to focus tonight on really sort of the work of the town and Thursday on the community. But I wanted to point out that one of my favorite books of all time, Molly's, my daughter and my grandson Teddy, and I love Mike Mulligan, and I love to read it to kids, because it has selectmen and a town hall. And my kids used to, you know, the classic line, they built the new town hall right over Mike Mulligan and Mary Ann, and that's where they stayed for the rest of their lives. Molly and Colleen would say, are they going to build the town hall over you, Mom? I guess I'll be in the basement powering the town hall.
With Mary Ann.
With Mary Ann, right. So when I look back, I think just so much of it and so many wonderful things that people had to say really involve building, right? So we did a lot of building of things, and we did a lot of building of team, and we did a lot of building of relationships and of community. Building is creating or developing something over a period of time, and I think that's really what we've done. You know, the infrastructure is something that I'm the most proud of. For the schools, we had a major renovation at the Newman. We built the Sunita Williams, we bought a farm to put the Sunita Williams on. And then we needed one more house. Matt and I called the owner, and we said, how about this amount? And they said, sounds fair. Probably the best negotiation ever. We renovated the High Rock. You know, I'm not going to take credit for Broad Meadow and Elliott, because they were started before me. And I think probably every year since I started, we've done something at the high school. New municipal facilities, we built new municipal facilities where nobody else is doing that. We built PSAB, which is our Public Services Administration Building, to pull public works out of the 470 building, which other employees are still working in, but that's your next endeavor. So that was a brand-new building. We built the Center at the Heights, which many people in this room were involved in, trying to find a location for a senior center for years, a brand-new facility. The Memorial Park Field House, there had been something there, but nothing like what we have now, which is an amazing building. The Cogswell Building, also known as JCB. And we finally pulled the pool out of the lake and built the Rosemary Recreation Complex, but it's way more than just a bathhouse, which it was before its town offices. So that's just really, it's really astounding, because if you look at all those, PSAB opened in 2010, and everything else was after. So that's been a, you know, kind of a real run on building. Probably one of the things I'm the most proud of is Fire Station 2 in the Public Safety Building. They were always out on the list, they were always at the end of the master plan, they were always frankly behind a school. And the fire chief took me on a tour of Station 2, and I came back and I said, oh, okay, we're going to get this done, because Station 2 was, as it had to come completely down. That was, I'm very proud of that. And while Station 2 was under renovation, we had a temporary fire station at the Hillside School, which is something I think people couldn't imagine. And, you know, rebuilding the old, probably something that I'm most excited about. We rebuilt this building, we rebuilt Emory Grover, and we rebuilt the library. And if you've ever been to the old post office building in Washington, which was a hotel at one point and is not now, Nancy Hanks is quoted by saying, "Old buildings are like old friends. They reassure people in times of rapid change. They encourage people to dream about their cities, to think before they build, to consider alternatives before they tear down." And I think that's a real metaphor for Needham. I mean, we really, we really want to keep what we have, because it brings us comfort, but we can make it better. Some other amenities, you know, the Amity Path, which came up earlier today, the rail trail, the Common, major infrastructure. I don't even know if people are left to remember Adeline, but it was a big deal for a long time that we were working on. The Highland Ave, Needham Street Bridge. Do you remember when we closed the Central Ave Elliott Street Bridge? Is Mo still here? That was a really big one. And we also built financial sustainability. I joke that my biggest contribution to the town is funding our OPEB, but I kind of mean it. We're at 57% funding, which is probably, you know, in the top five in the Commonwealth. The last 15, 17 budgets without a recourse for an operating override is something that many people touched on, is that in times that are good, we're steady, and in times we're bad, we're able to be steady, because we were cautious when times were good. And that's just really a good way to live. Bringing in the tax increment financing, the TripAdvisor and NBC Universal were something that was just really, a lot of world headquarters, we're the only suburban town around with two television stations and a major network. And Dave being able to parlay that into full-day kindergarten with no override, it's just an amazing thing. And as we talked about last month, when S&amp;P says that your credit rating is stable and you're jumping up and down, that's us. With respect to building a team, I rewrote five times what names I was going to mention. It's so hard. But I will say, our senior leadership team right now, which seems safe, Dave, Katie, Dan Gudicants, Tom Comrie, John Schlittler, Karis, and Tim, you know, we've been together a long time, they just, they're so dedicated to this town. The OTM staff, Miles, Louise, and Carol, and most recently, Kristin, Emily, Nikki, and Sandy, they really were your, they were just there for you. And all the department managers, many of them are here, which is so wonderful. And the rest of the town staff, almost 400 of them, and as I noted, I hired all but seven. Three firefighters, three DPW employees, and one librarian. Thank you for the data, Dave. And, you know, I miss our friend Tony, who died in service and would absolutely be here. Would he not, Tom? I estimate approximately 800 Select Board meetings since I took this job. Maybe? That's a lot. 23 Select Board members, 17 since I was in this role. And, you know, I really want to thank those who took a chance on me in 2001, two and a half weeks before 9/11, when I took this job, and then again in 2005, and this board today. Every board has a different character, and I've truly enjoyed working with all of you. We joke here that when I say something will continue, that the town manager really is a sample size of one. If you count the town administrator role, it's a sample size of two, which isn't much better from a predictive standpoint. But as we say, the systems that we create leave ruins in an organization, and I think that you will be very well-served by the next leadership, because new ideas will come forward and unnecessary things will fall off. And because we are so steady, I think there won't be a whole lot of change. And I just am so grateful to have been Needham's town manager. I don't know who I am if I'm not the town manager, but I'm going to go find out. Thank you.
Actually, the next thing is not water rates.
The next thing is our poet laureate.
Oh, yes.
Welcome. All right. So Bob Uclane, Library Director, and Anne Neidem, poet laureate. Thanks for joining us.
Select Board. We're here tonight just to give an update on the program that started late last year. Anne will talk about the many activities she's been involved in since December, and then share a poem that she's written for Needham. So this, the poet Anne Neidem is our first poet laureate for the town of Needham. It's the brainchild of Kate Fitzpatrick, one of her many great ideas. So we selected Anne last fall, and she launched her tenure as the first poet laureate in early December. So we've done a lot of work with Anne, who's been fantastic to work with. We've created a web presence, a logo, bookmarks. The library staff are helping Anne to do all that she's done. She's met and brought poetry to hundreds of Needham residents since December, and we're looking forward to a whole more, a whole year more of Anne bringing the power of poetry to all corners of Needham.
Excellent.
So I am tempted to attribute all of these fabulous things everybody has been saying about Kate to her love of poetry, or at the very least correlated highly. And thank you, obviously, for bringing this post into being. So, some of the activities that we have done. In December, I participated in the Poetry Discussion Group at the library, which is monthly, and Poetry Program for Teens at the library. In February, I did a book reading of my new book at the library. I did poetry workshops with all four classes of the second grade at Mitchell Elementary School. In March, I did poetry workshops with the four fourth-grade classes at Mitchell. In April, I did a writing workshop at the library, again with the Poetry Discussion Group. I did a reading, a poetry reading, at First Parish UU Church, which has put up a poetry walk in their garden there. I did a National Great Poetry Reading Day program at Center at the Heights. We created the, had the logo created, as Rob alluded to. In May, we had 10 poetry stations hosted by artists during Needham Open Studios, where the artists gave out poems. And we also worked on putting together a webpage, which we're going to do a lot more with, and made the bookmarks. And then just now in June, we brought poetry to, I should thank Josh for having also brought poetry, but we added poetry to the Juneteenth commemoration event that was at Town Hall just last week. So we have been working on sharing poetry with, you know, all the different constituencies that we can get to and helping to use it in its role as helping us to understand and express ourselves and to empathize and see the world the way other people see it. So it just helps us connect in that way. And then one of the jobs that I was given was to write a poem for the town of Needham. And so I will now share it. It is called "Home, Needham 2025." Each of us is home to many homes. The place you're born may settle in the heart. For some, New England's maple-sweetened hills; for some, a scene of other trees on other earth. The place you went to school may live in you. Lessons like the slant of sun, arrangements of worn desks, voices in whatever language cradled childhood dreams. A home may be the city where you joined someone, the house where family grew, the place you came to rest. A song may carry you like home, that book that always draws you in, the face of one who loves you, their voice, their touch, where you belong. We carry many homes within us, packed like sweaters, still carrying familiar scents and whispered memories. But for all the gathered homes folded in our hearts, layered, tattered, outgrown, loved, we share the same home here. This home comes wrapped in trees, displayed on granite ledge, tied with a ribbon of river. We share this home in checkout lines, familiar streets, the trill of wrens and shrill of hawks, the snow, the mud. We share the fireworks and fire trucks, playground and commuter rail, parking lots and parks. And in this shared place, we are home to one another. Our faces, our voices, our fears and joys, frustration and generosity. Each of us the fabric of each other's lives, and each of us is home.
Oh, fantastic.
Yay.
Wow, that was fantastic. So, thank you. Can you get the copy? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I just want to say, you do us all proud as our first poet laureate. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Okay. Dave Davidson, will you join us and talk about trust funds?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, again. As Mr. Morale mentioned earlier, that he and many other folks have raised funds in order to establish a trust fund that would be known as the Kathleen Kate P. Fitzpatrick Professional Development Fund. And that we are seeking the board's acceptance of this and turning the trust over to the custody of the town treasurer collector, and to be managed by the trust fund commissioners. On the spending authority would be with the future town managers. And this is keeping with something that is very near and dear to Kate's art in professional development. That is something that some of the first things that she had said to me in terms of interview is that when I asked, is this support for participation in professional organizations? She said, we have on our website a policy that I wrote encouraging professional development. And it's been her mantra over these many decades. And we think this is a great way to truly honor her, not just today, but for many years forth.
Agreed. This is a wonderful idea and perfect for Kate. Perfect way to memorialize. So we'll start with Kathy. Any comments?
No, I just think it's very fitting, and I love the idea.
Kevin?
Yeah, no, I love it. It's about building staff and careers. And so the town benefits, but we love that. It's your example too, Kate, so thank you.
Mary Ann?
When I learned about the fund, it was obvious to me what it was going to be for. So, perfect.
Consistency.
I think it's so soothing to you, Kate.
Fabulous idea, fabulous execution. Thanks you to everyone who was involved, and of course, to its inspiration. So I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board accept donations for the establishment of a new trust fund to be known as the Kathleen Kate P. Fitzpatrick Professional Development Fund, and that the funds be transferred to the custody of the treasurer collector and maintained by the commissioners of trust funds. Funds may be expended at the discretion of the town manager on expenses for professional development for manager, management-level town employees, but not the town manager. Expenses may include, but are not strictly limited to, conference and seminar registration fees and travel expenses. Related to said conference or seminar, use of the funds is allowed at times when the usual funding sources cannot fully cover costs. Both principal and interest may be expended, but that a permanent balance of $3,000 must be maintained.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? We'll take a vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to a public hearing on an Eversource grant of location for 36 Colton Park. I imagine we're being joined by Joanne Callender. And... It looks like just Joanne.
Yep.
Okay. Hi, Joanne.
Good evening. If appropriate, I'd just like to say congratulations to the town manager on her retirement.
That's awesome.
We're here tonight for a grant of location for 36 Colton Park. This is a new service to a new home, new underground service to a new home. so six feet of conduit approximately into Colton Park.
Okay, great. Is everything in order?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do not have any.
Okay, it's a public hearing, so if there's anybody online or in the room who wants to say a word. I don't see anyone. Okay. In that case, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, that the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately six feet of conduit in Colton Park.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Kathy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Josh?
Yes.
Marian?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Okay, excellent. And then, we'll move on, Joanne, to 9 Alden Road. And I think Joe Pronduck is here to join us for this one as well. The building commissioner. Welcome. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Take it away, Joanne.
EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately seven feet of conduit into Alden Road. And this is to, for existing service right now, move it from overhead to underground.
Okay. And I understand there's backstory here? It's already done?
This is already done, yes. The grant of location process has been one that I've been tweaking over my couple of years. And we think we have it down pretty good for new homes, but this was an existing home. There was no construction, there was no building permit, simply an electrical permit that got issued. And one of our inspector of wires did go out and approve the work underground. If you were to look at this site, you would swear that the pole was on private property. It's a very unusual condition. So, there were no flag trays. But having been made aware of this, I have implemented a new policy that when staff takes in a permit for any underground service, that they hold off on any inspections on that work until we are sure that either no grant of location is required or grant of location has been actually issued by the board.
Okay, excellent. That's how we find the missed bits. So, great, I'm glad to hear that there's a new process in place. Anybody have any other comments?
That's great. And of course, it happens on one where there's actually, looks like no potential conflict with a neighbor, but.
It's very, yeah, it's very fortunate. Right.
Since this is at the end of the order, is there any other connection from that pole to any other house?
I'm not aware of that. I don't, I'm not sure. I haven't seen it physically myself.
So, this isn't, I guess, a discussion tonight, but this might be a good circumstance to discuss in the future about when we can have overhead, remove poles. Basically, insist that, you know, in this circumstance, when the overhead wire is being transferred to underground, then basically, we can ask that the pole be removed and the remainder of the wire be undergrounded.
Right, but in this particular case, it goes from the pole to underground. So, the service comes to the pole, then goes underground to the house. So, the pole would still have to remain in this case.
So, between, I'm saying between the other pole, where there's overhead wire between, that connects to this pole, that's where I think we can have a discussion. I mean, we don't want to, I guess, we've had discussions in the past about undergrounding of wires and when it would be appropriate. And this seems like this could be a good discussion point for how we can move it, because it's good that service is undergrounded. If we have everyone undergrounded service, but we still have poles, that might not be the best outcome.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Although, Josh, the challenge, right, is the cost down the street, which is the public cost, which is the millions per mile or whatever the metric is that we've been given for that. I mean, to some extent, the easy part, I think, is the pole to the house. And it's excellent that those are being done, and those are the riskiest places in some ways that are more vulnerable to branches. But I think the biggest part of the cost is actually still to come.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
One pole at a time, I think.
Yeah, it does look like this pole is right in front of the house. It is. So, if the electricity comes to the pole, what you're talking about is tearing up the road to get it under the road.
Yeah.
But there's not usually just one set of wires per pole. So, I mean, it does sound like it's a complicated case-by-case basis. But for this grant of location, I'm pleased that you were able to implement a new process. So, I don't have any other real concerns.
And I looked at the photo, and I couldn't understand, like, where, this appears to be on private property.
It does, because the landscape, it goes up beyond the property line.
Right, and the freeway, too, against the fence, too. Madam Chair, make a motion, the select board? Oh, it's a public hearing, I don't want to jump ahead.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone online or in the room who would like to make a comment on this case? Doesn't look like anyone in the room either. So, Mr. Keane?
I don't want to rush this, but okay. That the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately seven feet of conduit in Alden Road.
Excellent.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Okay, Kathy?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote yes. All right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Joanne.
Okay, moving on. I have a raucous time looking at water and sewer rates. Going to welcome back Dave Davidson, Karis Lustig, and Celia Sincheck to talk, to review last week's information on recommended strategies for water rates. So, when we discussed this last time, as I'm sure everyone recalls, there were 88 options that you had narrowed down to three that are part of our packet again this evening. Could you just review those quickly for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. The, as you noted, the Water Sewer Rate Structure Committee came before the board extra-public hearing two weeks ago, where they narrowed down the number of options down to three alternatives that we identify as so-called Alternative 70, Alternative 64, and Alternative 16. Each will raise the necessary revenue in order to meet the town's budget obligations for water and sewer operations for fiscal 2026. As was discussed at the meeting, a couple of other issues are there. One, we are still going from the process of changing the rate structure to reflect that we do not have a Coca-Cola bottling operation that, of course, ended in 2020. And at that time, we were looking at a three-year phase-in, but we had COVID, and so, rates were put on hold during that time. Couple of years ago, we started the process of mitigating the impact of the loss of Coca-Cola. But we have also had some other trends that were developing, and that is that overall consumption is down, but the cost basis is still an inclining cost. Public water and sewer are some of the most expensive items, capital-intensive, and it's a core service for both public health, public convenience, and for civilized society. Recognizing this is that, as was foretold last year when we looked at a rate increase, that you'd be looking at several higher-than-normal rate increases. And this is true. The question is identifying the issue that a subsidy is provided at multiple steps. And again, to make it clear, the subsidy is not property taxes coming in to subsidize, but that the other ratepayers are paying even more money in order to sell water at less than cost. So, that's what's meant by the subsidy rate. But as conservation efforts take hold, and when one uses one less gallon of water, that's the most expensive gallon. So, that revenue source is declining quicker than the demands on the town's water and sewer systems. And in order to continue or maintain a subsidy level that's actually grown over the past 10 years, you've got to keep going up and up by significant percentages on a smaller and smaller percentage of the customer base. Particularly, businesses are hard-hit by this with these rate increases. So, the committee also brought that to the attention, and with some guidance, we're looking at still maintaining a subsidy level in recognition that those who have made extraordinary efforts to reduce discretionary use of water and sewer would pay a lower rate. And also, recognition that some that use less tend to be people of more limited means. So, that having a step system where the subsidy at step one for water would not be more than 20%, and at step two, more than 10%. And then, there would not be a subsidy, as there currently is at step three, or a subsidy, and there is not one at step four. In the case of sewer, the same thing, but at step one, not more than a 10% subsidy; in step two, not more than a 5% subsidy. None of these rate structures get there in one year. And as the, and as the committee said, it would be a multi-phase approach. And really, what the board is looking at is, and weighing the alternatives, is how quickly you want to get to getting those, getting to those lower subsidy levels so that rate increases in future years will be more one of the actual cost increases and not just because of a declining use at the top steps.
Chair, I have a question. You described the 10% and 20% targets that you proposed. What are the subsidies in these alternatives?
Under Alternative 70, if that rate structure is adopted, you would still, at step one, have a subsidy level of 36.2%. At step two, 31.6%. There would be no subsidy at step three and no subsidy at step four. And of course, there is no subsidy at any of the irrigation rates. For sewer, the step one subsidy would be 14.9%. And step two would be 6%. No subsidy at step three, no subsidy at step four. Under Alternative 64, you would be looking at a subsidy level at step one, water of 32.2%. At step two, 27.4%. So, in both instances, those subsidies are lower, slightly less than under Alternative 70. But you still have a subsidy at step three at 8.8%. And there would be no subsidy at step four on water. In terms of sewer, it's the same recommended sewer structure, so it would still be a 14.9% subsidy at step one and a 6% subsidy at step two. The third alternative, Alternative 16, the water subsidies are the same as Alternative 70, 36.2% and 31.6%, and no subsidy at step three or step four. And under sewer, the subsidy level for step one would be 9.9%. And at step two, it would be a half a percent, so under the 5% level, and no subsidy at step three or four. That Alternative 16 does have the highest one-year impact at 10% on the average single bill. Alternative 64 is a 6.4%, and Alternative 70 is a 5.5%.
What, is there a rationale for having a different subsidy for water than for sewer? More of a subsidy for water than for sewer?
The, the part was there, the way, specifically, why should it be greater in water than sewer? There was not such a conversation. Sewer has been the more problematic of the two, so having a lower subsidy lessens the chance of deficits arising because of billing not hitting the targets anticipated. The other aspect was that in water, irrigation meters would help provide a subsidy to the domestic water use. So, there is a source to do that. But other than that, there's not a philosophical reason why water is greater than sewer.
I'm just thinking, they're both necessary. Like, people need water, they need sewer. But those are necessary functions for the town to work and for residents.
The problem with, the extra added problem with the sewer is 75% of the budget is EMWRAS assessment, something that we have no control over. And in having a higher subsidy level at those steps and having a wet year so that we're not generating the water billing, the sewer revenue will be substantially under in order, and there would be a greater loss because step one, step two are paying that much less than the cost of delivering the surface, which means the following year, you're just going to have to go up the rates even much more. And for, and to maintain a subsidy system, the businesses would be hit even greater.
That's for why sewer is subsidies lower?
Yes.
I guess, in general, because I think water and sewer are so crucial, vital for people, I think the lower steps do need to have a subsidy. Like, I think it's important for residents to, there's some basic minimum amount of water that is really necessary for people to live, that they should not be, that they should be charged the least amount possible for.
And this structure, it's still, this structure is still doing that. And stuff, it's just at the level, we're getting up into 40% ranges. And quite frankly, I mean, when Coca-Cola pulled out, you were at a situation that the entire water operation was running at a loss because every gallon of water was being sold for less than its cost. And that's not sustainable. And what's worse than being expensive is not having water at all. And I think, fortunately, we do take that for granted because of the convenience. And not only take it for granted in the US, but we take it even much more so in New England, because we tend not to have the water problems that other areas of the country have. And so, we're not always as mindful. The other thing, which I mentioned from time to time, is the perspective, the water rates, the most, if the highest rate were to be adopted, the most expensive option, and you look at that for the irrigation rate, and irrigation rate at step four at $9.98, what that translates into is 1.3 cents per gallon cost. Put in perspective, a two-and-a-half-gallon Poland Spring water is $1.95 per gallon. Poland Spring, eight-ounce bottle, is $3.33 per gallon. Open water in a can, $8.88 per gallon. So, the fact is, we do do a good job to provide clean, safe water. And people appreciate the ability to be able to buy bottled and canned water and pay those levels. And, but yet, when we have to go up on the rate, and we're talking the change from 1.2 cents to 1.3 cents, if the most expensive rate is, and that's for irrigation water, that we get concerned that we're charging too much. We're charging what it costs to deliver.
I just wanted to add to that, that we also offer an abatement process for those who are truly in a needs-based situation. So, the lower level is not necessarily for the person who doesn't have the capacity to be able to afford to pay. to be able to afford to pay for the water that they need because it is a necessary service. It's really for more the conservationist or the person who's not using as much water to benefit from. We have other programs to assist those who are unable to afford their water bill.
As we move into a time when we're changing our billing systems and so on, you and I talked about whether or not there are economies of scale combining water and sewer?
The, there's really no economies of scale that's going to be developed because we're, we already have the economy of scale because our billing system and everything accounts for those two things. Districts that do combine them tend to do it in order to hide the costs of sewer by charging more on water. Department of Revenue discourages combining the two enterprise funds into a single enterprise, which is what you would have to do in order to have water rate subsidized sewer rates. You would also have citizens who are not on this public sewer, so that, which is some of the reasons why Needham originally created separate enterprise funds, to which DOR does reference that this is how Needham did it, for communities that do have combined water and sewer operations for enterprise fund, for enterprise fund accounting, that they wouldn't want to be paying for maintaining the sewer system when all they're using is the public water system. So those are many reasons why the, the structure of water and sewer enterprises are set up separately. But in terms of economy of scales, we already do have that. It's the water and sewer staff, and they're doing work in both divisions, but we allocate the costs appropriately between the two enterprise funds and the same, a single billing system and things like that.
I was just going to note that although we're talking about these subsidies existing for those who are actively pursuing conservation, the answer is that everybody in town benefits because you only pay the higher rate once you reach the threshold of each step. So, so I would hope that everybody in town is, is working on some level of conservation, but that's not necessarily true. But they still see a benefit as a result. I actually support this work and I personally am in favor of A16. I know that it's the highest, but I do understand that the, we have a considerable amount of work ahead of us in this area and the greater risk is in the sewer area, and I would support that level of rate for sewer. So that's my view.
I would be supportive of alternative 70, so the lowest increase, the 5.5% increase. And that's because I think, last meeting I mentioned, there are many other increases, not just in water and sewer, that people are facing, in property taxes, in other fees. And these little increments all add up.
Yeah. I kind of wish, reading all this, if there's a pie chart, like, where's the bulk of the rate pairs in step one or step two, three? Like, where's the sweet spot?
Everybody is at step one.
Yeah.
And, but in water, domestic water use, approximately 78% of the total billed water is in those two steps.
Okay. All right.
So three quarters of the domestic water is sold at a loss. Or in other words, another way of saying it, the 22% has to make up the revenue that those, that the 78% doesn't pay.
David, it's also a fair statement, I think, based on that, to say, three quarters or close to 80% of the town reaches some amount of water in step three.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So just many, everybody really is benefiting from these subsidies at these first two steps that currently exist.
In, in terms of, I'm talking about total pumped water, 78%.
Okay.
In terms of customers, there's a greater number, the number of customers is even greater because it tends to be the commercial facilities that are regularly in step four.
Okay. Right.
Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dave. This is so helpful to understand. I had a couple of questions. So it sounds like Articles, Alternative 16, since it deals with sewer, is dealing with the area where we are furthest off from where we need to be, which is sewer, which is, you know, MWRRA-driven, that we can't control. How much, if we went with alternative 16, what would that do to the average quarterly bill?
The, under alternative 16?
Yeah.
Basically, it's about $49 a quarter more.
And as compared to the others? So 49 for Article 16 and?
For Article 64, it would be about $31 a quarter more. And for Article, I'll tell, I'm not Article, Alternative 70, it would be about $26 a quarter more.
Okay. And then I guess the follow-
And, and just to be clear, that's total. That's water and sewer.
Water and sewer. And just, just to follow up on that, those are the averages. Are there groups that are more or less impacted by any of these articles? Because are there groups that use more sewer versus water, et cetera, that, that may be relatively advantaged or disadvantaged by any of these alternatives?
The, well, the options that were selected, recommended by the committee, these alternatives for individuals with lower consumption, and because those figures that I referred to is based upon the industry average of 12,000 cubic feet per year. But two years ago, the average Needham household used 9,094 cubic feet per year. In that instance, the, where for the average, the 12,000 cubic feet per year customer, we're looking at a 5.5% increase overall. For that average Needham consumer, 9,094, you'd be looking at a 4.9% increase. For alternative 64, where it's a 6.4% increase in the rate, that same 9,094 customer would be a 6.3% increase in their annual bill. And then alternative 16, which is a 10% increase at 12,000 cubic feet, at 9,094 would be a 9.4% increase. For the low end, for someone who never gets beyond step one, using about 1,200 cubic, 2,400 cubic feet of water per year, under the first alternative would be a 3.9% increase or, or basically a $5 a quarter increase. Under alternative 64 would be a 5.1% increase and under alternative 16, a 7.4% increase. So for any given customer, the impact is going to be different. Not everybody's, is the same. What we do is the industry average, so we can compare ourselves to other districts as well as maintain a standard way of measuring usage. But in terms of individual households, the, the difference varies. And even the same household over time, as the kids grow up and get out and once teenagers are gone, water consumption drops again and things like that, so.
Okay. So the next question is, if all three options are going to get us to a spot we want to be at where there were sort of reduced subsidies, how fast do we get there with the three options?
The, each of the options, well, alternative 16 will probably get you there in two years.
Two years, okay.
The other two will probably be looking at a three-year process. But it was not just how quickly you get there, but what the percentage increases are going to look like in the rates in the out-years. This FY 2025 was a 5.9% increase, for instance. And as was foretold then, that you'd be looking at higher rate increases and you're looking at a gambit between 5.5 to 10%.
Okay. Like, I appreciate Mary Ann's point, like, we want to right-size this as fast as possible. But I appreciate Josh's point that, like, we want, we don't want to pound people on this.
Yes, and both are very balanced.
And as you're mentioning all of the percentage increases, I'm also thinking about incomes. I mean, for most people, incomes don't increase, I mean, by 5% a year. I mean, that, we want to make sure that expenses don't increase faster than people can, people's incomes.
We recognize that. Also, we do the comparison and Needham, for a wealthy town, has some of the lowest annual water and sewer bills in the area consistently for decades. And that's also, also true. So, because when you have lower rates, smaller increases seem, on a percentage basis, greater. I mean, go from one penny to two penny, to two penny, it's a 100% increase, but it's a penny. So, and that's why these increases sound much greater, but it's because our rates tend to be lower than some of the area towns. But even with that, many of the area towns' percentage increases are still coming in higher than Needham, and they, and they have higher water and sewer rates than Needham. So it's recognized, that's what the committee looks at, that's what we look at in terms of trying to do the balance of, of when we need to do rate increases and try to be looking out three years. Again, that was something that the committee had mentioned, is when we do rate forecasting, we look at what's the average revenue we need to raise over three, and that's a rate structure that we looked at. And then indeed, for this particular year, because those were going to be so much more, they actually looked at, what does it take just to meet this year's revenue needs? So, in recognition of the concern about percentage increases.
So then what would the impact be? I mean, are we still looking at, I assume we're still looking at major increases year over year into the foreseeable future?
Yes, but they should moderate. The, the other two factors that are hard is to forecast is sewer, billable sewer volume's been declining year after year after year. And, but of course, our costs are going up more and more each year, so that on a percentage basis will be going up because you have a smaller billed volume in order to split the fixed costs over. And so other than gaining more customers, which takes time for that to happen, and in order to spread out the fixed costs, and fixed costs, we're talking capital, infrastructure and such, can be, because that cost is the same, whether, basically the same, whether we have 10,000 customers or 11,000 customers or 12,000, because we have to have a sewer system designed to handle the sewer that's flowing. And the sewer just doesn't flow in Needham. It comes from our west and it travels east to Boston. So we have to have the capacity to, to meet the flow and any future demands.
So let me ask you, Amay, which is your preferred option?
Well, I had 88. The, all three do work, interestingly enough, and it's, and the two members are sitting next to each other, but, but I was asked even earlier, it's either option A16 or A70.
So is there a compelling reason not to choose 64 then? I mean, it seems like the middle path.
Starting at the, the mantra is the subsidy, given with the, having a structure that has a subsidy at step three as soon as possible makes most sense. And that still has a subsidy at the step three rate, the A64. The A70 and A16 both don't have a subsidy at the step three rate. So that makes future year increases that much easier in order to slowly reduce the, the subsidy at the, at the step one, step two rates.
That was really the challenge to me of looking at option A64 was on the waterfront, where the level of increase is so much flatter and understanding that it was still subsidized at the higher rate, that definitely pushed me to either 70 or 16. And then I still worried about the sewer piece, which got me to 16 and got Josh to a different place, so.
And I think these order, is, this is the recommended order, the ranked order by the Water and Sewer Rate Commission, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So they preferred 70 of the other two?
Yes.
Why did they prefer 70? Because it keeps rates lower or for other reasons?
The, they were thinking that the board would want to do it over, a phase out of the rates, this rate subsidy, the board would be more palatable to taking an extra year to getting there rather than doing it all along. But they didn't want to make that assumption, that the board just wanted to do it that way. That's why they had alternative 16 as well.
Okay.
The board's recognizing, is trying to help, the committee is recognizing, is trying to help the board get to a resolution.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Any other comments? Does Kathy have any? Yeah, she, she spoke already. She's never hand up.
Yeah.
May I make a motion?
Go ahead.
A move that the board approve the water and sewer rates identified as alternative 70 and that they be effective July 1st, 2025, that the board approve a septic, septic disposal fee of $85 per 1,000 gallons.
So let me just confirm. With alternative 70, it's only one additional year to get to the same spot. It seems like-
That's my estimation right now.
It seems like there's a $20 difference per quarter in year one.
Yep.
That's a lot to make up in two years.
Again, making that analogy, it's, the bill's going to be that much higher, so the percentage increase is not going to sound as much. It's still going to be a flat dollar amount the same. I mean, we, we are talking $26 increase per quarter compared to, you know, a $49 increase per quarter.
Right. So it says to me that you're going to have higher increases. I mean, the question is, what's the rate of increase? You will have higher increases under alternative 70 baked in going forward than you do from?
A16.
16, where you take a little bit more of a hit now and then they're smoother going forward. It's just, what do you think is going to happen, so?
Yeah. I mean, for myself, I would prefer to just get it over with and have the higher increase and, and stay steadier. But I take your point, there's been a lot of increases. And if it's only one additional year to get to that same level, then I think that's probably worth it for me.
Right.
To have a steadier and slower rate of change. So I'll second your motion.
Kathy has her favorite?
Oh, Kathy, thank you.
I just had one other clarifying question. So if it's going to take an additional year, that, that doesn't necessarily mean it will be less smooth, right? It'll just be sort of slower, right? You could still have it smooth, but you could just get to where you want to be a year later. Is that a correct interpretation?
Smooth is just relative in terms of what you're talking about percentage increases. Is it a double-digit increase over multiple years or is it a single-digit increase each The other variable, as I, as I said, is consumption. If there's dramatic changes in consumption, is, then it may take longer or could, or I don't see where extra consumption's going to come from permanently, but if that were to happen, then it would, it would happen quicker than anticipated. These assumptions that I've been discussing is all based upon what we're assuming now for billable volume this year, coming up 26, 27, and 28. But, but billable volume is always the other variable. But, but billable volume is always the other variable.
Okay. All right.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor then to approve alternative 70. Kathy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you very much for not only all the work, but the repetitive explanation.
Please link the committee, this is a huge amount of work.
Much appreciated.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so, Dave is staying, and we're going to be joined by our-
Mr. McIntyre.
By Mr. McIntyre from CBIZ Advisors.
If I could move the appointments and consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I had a couple edits to the minutes.
Yeah, I couldn't open your files, so I haven't seen them.
Then could we postpone Article 1, uh, excuse me, Item 1?
Have any significant changes?
I mean, there are changes, I think it's important everyone sees them.
Okay.
Did you have a chance to see them?
No.
Yeah, okay. Did you see them?
Well, no, I just read the minutes, I didn't see Josh's.
I didn't even see an email with changes, so.
Okay, so we'll postpone the minutes. Put that off the consent so that we can have a chance to review those.
And I would move appointments and consent without Item 1.
Okay.
Second.
Excellent. Kathy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Yes, for me, okay, great. Good. And now?
Madam Chair, we're here to have the auditors present to you their findings for FY 2024. The audit is late, quite late. We usually hope to have this done in December or six months from the close of the fiscal year, and we're coming to you 12 months since the close of the fiscal year as we get ready to close fiscal 2025. There were a number of reasons for those delays, but from the town's perspective, we had problems in terms of closing the books for fiscal 24. They're related to changes in staff, vacancies that we have had, some problem issues that we've had with our software that have all contributed. And in fact, it is, goes a little beyond that, that the audit firm also in their management recommendations that they have, they did identify what's referred to as a material weakness, and that was that the timing of the town getting its accounts reconciled, cash and receivables, took, started like 10 months late, which is correct, and again, for the reasons that I stated. They had, they also agree that the, the causes for this was debt turnover and the treasurer collector and the computer system conversions contributed to those delays. They have recommended that the town, if we're unable to get these things done timely, that we seek consideration of outsourcing some of that work, which the town is currently in the process of doing. We're hiring some firms to help catch us up to date in terms of reconciliations and such. We don't disagree with their findings, we don't disagree, we agree with their recommendations. And, and we're also looking to implement new procedures in this, during this coming year, which is fiscal 26, in terms of having a more permanent correction to the reconciliation process and the timeliness to that. Other than that, it was a good audit in terms of, from a financial standpoint, there were no areas of concern in terms of our financial position. It's fairly stable and consistent, fairly consistent with fiscal 23. And to that, I will turn this over to Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, David, Madam Chair, members of the board. If I may, I'll also add to the conversation tonight and just congratulate Kate. I've known Kate for a number of years, and congratulations.
I think a number of decades.
Yeah. David probably just made my job quite, quite easy. I think what he articulated to you folks is spot on. I often come here, as I do to many places and talk about, you know, that there were no significant issues developed in the audit. I've done that for, for years in Needham. This year's an exception. This year's an, an exception, and we see this in communities, and I've been doing this, as Kate alluded, a long, long time. And when there are, oftentimes when there are position, key position turnovers, computer system conversions, there is a breakdown in internal controls that occurred here in Needham in fiscal year 2024, where cash and receivables, you know, the key bank account and key receivable account reconciliations were not fully complete until much later than they, they should be. You know, David talked about striving to have this issued within six months, that's the standard. That's the standard, and that's what rating agencies are going to be looking for going forward. I say that quite honestly, it, that whole process has slipped really since COVID, but rating agencies are appropriately so, in my opinion, pushing back now saying, you know, we need these things issued within, you know, six, maximum nine, nine, nine months, so. With that said, I also agree with what the finance director was saying, is that the, the numbers, and I'll walk through some of the key things in here, are very consistent with, with prior year. I see some of you have a hard copy. I will try to, everybody's going to get them. I will reference a few pages, but I will talk, you know, sort of just generically about some of the key accounts that are in your financial statements. I will point out and start with, with page one, which is our independent auditor's report. In our opinion, your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles here in the United States. Goes on to tell you, we base that opinion on the two sets of auditing standards that we followed. I can speak about them at, at length, but I'll really defer to the board if there are questions about that. Following our opinion is management's discussion and analysis, sometimes referred to as MDNA, a great resource to go back to at a later point in time. I'm actually going to start, if you choose to follow along, it goes on to page 22. Page 22 and 23 are what are known as the, the long-term perspective financial statements. Essentially, there are, not essentially, there are really two sets of financial statements in here. A long-term, which we're looking at the long-term balance sheet right now, and in a minute, we'll turn to your short-term perspective or almost a cash basis balance sheet. But on page 22 and 23, again, this is your long-term perspective balance sheet, really we don't think any presentation of a local government's financial statements right now would be complete without at least a quick conversation about the two long-term liabilities, called your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. You can rec, you can see these numbers, there's, if on page, print page 23, there's three columns. If you look over in the total column, about halfway down, you see the description on, on the left-hand side, your net pension liability of about $75 million. That's down about $12 million over the same point in time a, a year ago. That's, that is, has declined because in calendar 2023, investment earnings were significantly better than estimated. Only a couple of years ago, I believe that number was, you know, quite a bit, quite a bit lower, but then came calendar 2022, in which the returns were significantly less than what was anticipated. I would want to point out that the, the liability of almost 75 million, it is about 76% funded, and that the current funding schedule shows the unfunded liability is scheduled to mature in fiscal year 20, pardon me, 20, fiscal year 33, sorry about that. Right below that, on, back on page 23, is your net, is your net OPEB liability. OPEB is the acronym for other post-employment benefits, and what that really means is retiree healthcare. And as of June 30, 2024, that liability was about $60.5 million. That also went down about $12 million from, from, from the prior year. I do want to point out that in both of your pension liability and your OPEB liability, the town has selected a discount rate, it's one of the key assumptions that, that it goes into the valuations that help determine these liabilities, has selected a discount rate of 6.25%. Basically, what that means is you're expecting the, the future earnings of the plan to, to be about 6.25%. Those, those assumptions are key, and they're very consistent with similarly rated, rated communities. It's a conservative approach and one that I think is, is viewed very favorably to, to have such a conservative rate.
Did that rate change?
No, it did not change. It did not change.
And compared to similar communities, I think our, our OPEB and pension funding is pretty high.
Uh, it, it is. I'll touch base on that now, given the question, maybe save us a, turning to a particular page later, later on. I mentioned your, your pension was, was about 76% funded, and I think I said, just a couple of years ago, it was in the mid 80s, I, I believe, and came calendar 2022. From, from an OPEB percentage, you're 57, 58% funded. I, I think I heard Kate talk about that when I was in the hallway. If that's not at the, if that's not tops in the Commonwealth, it's, it's darn, darn, darn close.
Worth mentioning, yeah.
Yeah. Turning quickly over to print page 26. If the last balance sheet that we were looking at, as I referred to, is your long-term perspective, page 26 is the short-term perspective, almost a cash basis balance sheet. Now, the focus for the conversation will be the first column of numbers on page 26, the general fund, but I do want to point out, there's some columns just to the right of that, that are known as, that are thought of as, the next three columns are thought of as major funds, your community preservation fund, your town federal grant fund. Both of those were considered major funds last year, and in fiscal year 2024, the Emory, the, the Prover Building Fund was determined to be a, a major fund. So, what it means to be a major fund is you have your separately presented balance sheet, and if we were to turn forward two pages, the separately presented statement of revenues and expenditures. For all those funds that don't meet the definition of a major fund, they get consolidated into that second to last column going left to right on page 26, in what is known as your non-major governmental. That's kind of a big barrel where all the really small funds go. As you can see, it adds up to a fair amount because the community has, has a lot of funds, a lot of capital projects and a lot of grant funds and other special revenue funds. Now, coming back to the, to the, to the focus, and really the first place that almost all readers turn to in most local governments' financial statements is the first column here, the general fund, and the focus is on the numbers towards the bottom of, of that column. From the bottom up, the second number up from the bottom is your total fund balance of $72.3 million, and above that, you have four numbers, your unassigned, assigned, committed, and restricted. The first place that virtually all readers will almost always turn to is that unassigned fund balance with an account balance of 33.7, almost 33.8 million dollars. Year ago, that was 35.7 million dollars, so it's come down by about $2 million. I don't think that should surprise the community. If you think back a couple of years, that, that some of that unassigned fund balance, otherwise known in non-GAAP terms or non-generally accepted accounting terms, free cash was utilized so that, and, and Needham does that historically. So, it's down over the prior year, but if you look at your budget versus actual reports over the past couple of years, you see that there was, that some of that unassigned fund balance or free cash was used, and a lot of it was used for capital purposes, one-time, one-time costs, if, if, if you will. So, I do want to point out that, that, that unassigned fund balance represents about 17% of your fiscal year 2024 expenditures. Again, that's very consistent with similarly rated communities here in, in the Commonwealth. I do want to also point out, you're above the unassigned is your assigned of about $10 million. That includes things like encumbrances at year end that were carried forward from fiscal year 24 into 25, as well as some of your, your free cash that was utilized for fiscal year 25 for the, for your operating budget. And above that is your committed fund balance, where money is set aside for a particular expenditure purpose, it's committed to that, to that purpose. And most of that, $27 million, are your special purpose stabilization funds for capital and, and debt service and things like that, as well as some fund balance or free cash that was utilized for subsequent fiscal periods for particular expenditure purposes, purposes such as capital and, and OPEB. So, with that-
Can I ask you a question, maybe, Dave? I remember free cash for 2024 was less than the 33 million. I'm trying to reconcile those numbers.
Yes, the unassigned balance is, again, it's an accounting term, it's inclusive, like the general stabilization fund is in there, but as you know, that requires a town meeting vote, that's not, that is money that DOR does not consider available to be certified, it's free cash.
Thank you.
There's, I won't turn to it, but there's a page in the financial statements called the fund balance footnote that outlines that. If we could quickly turn over to page 32, the couple pages, so page 30, 31, we're moving into your enterprise, your, your water and sewer funds. I'm actually skipping over the, the balance sheet or the statement of net position and the statement of revenues and expenditures. I, I say this frequently, I'm not saying that the balance sheet and the operating statement are unimportant, but what I am saying is that the, in my opinion, the most important statement when it comes to enterprise funds is your statement of cash flow. And I'm not going to turn this into a, I put on a lot of training sessions about statement of cash flows, and I'm not going to, I turn, turn it into this, but all I will say is the net cash provided by operations has gone down over the last couple of years, and the way to, the best way to read this statement is to look at the net cash provided by operations and is it covering principal and interest on, on debt, debt service? You could probably find plenty of, Google and find plenty of slides out there. I can certainly take questions on it, but the best way to read this is, does the net cash provided by operations, is it covering principal and interest on debt service? And some of, it, I will tell you, it's, it's not, some of it is timing issues with the lateness of the bills that were issued, but that, that's certainly one, one factor. But I also just had the benefit of hearing Dave speak to, to the select board, and I think that you're seeing in your statement of cash flows, that, that the, that is, that the inflows of resources isn't keeping up with the outflows of resources, so. The last couple of pages that I want to turn to is just quickly over to page 34. Well, I, I think I said earlier, it might, might have saved me a page here, maybe I, since I, I'll start and I'll, I'll finish what I started here. What I was going to talk about on page 34, these, the first two columns here are your, are the Needham retirement system financials, the balance sheet, and the second column going left to right is the balance sheet of your other post-employment benefit trust fund. If you look at the very bottom line numbers, and actually three numbers up from the bottom, you can see that each of the funds primarily be driven by investment earnings, there's substantial increases in these funds, and this is where I, I'll reiterate the fact that pension was, is about 76% funded and OPEB above 57, 58% funded, so. With, with that, I will just let you know that there's a wealth of disclosures in here. There's probably 12 pages of talk about the assumptions when it comes to pension and OPEB. We've really hit on the, the key, key assumption that the town applies, which is your discount rate of 6.25%. There's other things in there, I can speak at length about them. There's a lot of disclosure about your long-term, long-term debt. I think one key attribute that I see in Needham, and see it in a few other places when it comes to your long-term debt, is how rapidly that debt is paid out. A lot of times, when I've been on certain ratings calls helping communities, the question isn't always asked about how much debt that a community has, but it's how rapidly it's being paid out. And you have a very rapid payout schedule, the, the key metrics is, you know, being around 70% within the next 10 years of paying off the principal. That, that is a key metrics that, that rating agencies use, so. With that, I want to thank you, and I will try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, this is incredibly in-depth. I, I guess I have one question. Dave has gone through why, you know, how, how we got to a place where we were 12 months behind, and we've taken a lot of steps, I think, in town to mitigate those circumstances. We are investing in a new billing system. We are investing in a new billing system to deal with all of the hiccups.
An integrated system.
An integrated system.
Financials and the billing package.
And a lot of our staffing issues have been cleared up as well. So when looking at those factors, does that, you know, have any impact on sort of the the impact of having been late?
It should. I don't mean to be vague, but in our opinion, and Dave spoke about it, and perhaps I didn't say enough about it when I, when Dave turned it over to me. The internal control structure in Needham has always been very sound and complete. This year was the exception. And having studied this, I really do believe, in my professional opinion, it's driven by staffing changes and computer system changes. I think going to an integrated system and knowing that there's more stability in the staffing, I think those two things are going to go a long way towards resolving the issues that were present in 2024.
Thank you.
That was my question. So thank you very much. But that was the town meeting vote, right, to pay for the new system?
Yes, and we're beginning the RFP process even as we speak.
Thank you. I think you answered my questions as we went. The only thing is, even though this is delayed, last year's audit of 2023, we were ahead of that schedule. So we're going the right track.
And what's our, where do we think we're going to land this year?
For the '25 audit, oh, well.
I know, our systems are still challenged, so.
Yes, my goal is still for the last meeting in December. But it's, but being realistic, it's probably going to be the last meeting in January.
That's not bad.
So we'll see you soon.
I appreciated the insight on cash flows for our enterprise funds. I don't think I've ever heard that stated quite that way before. And I've been at this for a while, so it was interesting to hear you frame it that way. I think that gives us some information that we should probably keep track of for next year, again, as we're thinking about the rate setting and how all that goes.
It really is the key metrics.
Yeah.
The statement in that position gets very busy with millions of dollars of capital assets out there. It's, this is where the cash flow statements is, where it's at.
Kathy, anything?
No, just, it was very, very informative. Thank you.
And as we talked about beach reads earlier this evening, this is truly in the beach read category. But it is worthwhile. I mean, it is actually a reference document. You're right for going back and understanding what's in different places.
And Madam Chair, may I just also add invitations were extended to the school committee and finance committee. And I note there is a member of the finance committee here in the audience as well. And I can't see anything but video in terms of who may be joining us remotely.
I think I saw another member of the finance committee as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
We hope we see you soon.
Next time in January.
It'll be a lot colder.
Yeah, really. It used to be snowing when you came.
Yeah.
All right. It is time for the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two items. Under the first, last week, I attended the school committee meeting where the school committee voted to approve the Unit A, which is the main teacher's contract for the, between the school committee and the Needham Education Association. The school committee and school administration reported that they had lost ground against the comparable salaries. And we know there'd been a lot of high-profile settlements in the area. They did note that it was an extraordinary period when they were trying to bring up, implement a COLA, do scale restructuring, and also implement updated parental and family leave. Those are the key issues in that contract. I liken this to the contracts that we signed in the last couple of years for fire and police, where sort of a one extraordinary settlement that happens every 10, 15 years. And the school committee members essentially assured me they understood the sustainability target and that that is the future. I think it's something the board and the school committee and the finance committee may want to talk about in the coming years, is, you know, what salary growth is to the budget and have some conversation about that. So I did want to report that, you know, people have been worried about whether there is a teacher's contract and the side's worked diligently to get that done.
Madam Chair, can I ask, does the fiscal '26 school department budget cover this contract?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
The other item is.
Kate, can I just say something? I'm going to say to everybody that I asked Kate actually to provide us the expanded background because when I read the first sheet, I just was concerned about the affordability over the long term. I understand, you know, what we've, the choices that we've made, and we have made choices with each of these major contracts. And I do think that this contract and the way that it's put together, because of the way the COLAs are set, are appropriate and are useful within the context of how we think about working with all of our unions. So that's a helpful context. But at the same time, I do think this notion of what our sustainability target is, is something that we're probably going to have to remind people about again. So Kate did say that. I think it's really important and that's something that this group has to help keep them focused on.
Typically, it has been 4%.
Between 4 and 4, between 4 and 5, I think, is the standard.
Between 4 and 5, yeah. So just at any rate, that's just perspective. Thank you.
So we recently discussed the water registration and whether to add that to your goals and the pending litigation. And we learned recently that Representative Pye has introduced House 1018, which is only a two-page bill, basically that says, "All properly filed Water Management Act renewal registration statements," which is one that we have, "shall entitle the registrants to their registered water use volumes without conditions, excepting proper metering." So we thought this would be a great opportunity for us to weigh in with the House and say, yes. Well, this is what we've been trying to get to. Whether the legislation, whether the court litigation goes in one way or another, legislation would certainly help us. We'll send a letter in unless the board has any objection.
Sounds like a great idea.
And you'll send that to both our House rep and to our state senator?
We, the, the Joint Committee on the Environment had a public hearing and the comment period is open, I think, till the end of the.
It's the next two weeks.
It's the next two weeks. So we'll follow with them, and we always copy our delegation.
Who is the chair of that, in fact? So.
So can I ask a clarification? So that means if that were to pass, we have a set amount of registered water that we're entitled to?
Yes.
And if there were a water restriction, we are not limited in drawing down that.
Exactly, right. It just gives us more flexibility in how and when we use our water. And it gives us the ability, you know, as we talked about, if there is no drought and we're telling people they can't buy water in the summer, then we're only hurting our, you know, you hear the conversations, we're hurting the bottom line there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is Kate, last town meeting, last town manager's report.
I know.
I got one more thing.
Collective bargaining in water, pretty much.
Bread and butter, evergreen. Yeah. All right, so we're going to move along now to a discussion of an open meeting law complaint that has been filed against the select board or members of the select board. And we will welcome up our town council, Chris Seep.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So can you do a little summary for us?
Yes, happy to. So as you noted, on June 16th, the select board received an open meeting law complaint from resident Barbara McDonald. The complaint concerns the process that was used to interview the applicants to fill the vacancy on the Needham Housing Authority and the process that was used to appoint the eventual person who now fills that seat. In particular, the complaint asserts that the interviews of the seven applicants, which were conducted by Kathy and Housing Authority Vice Chair Jim Flanagan, should have been conducted in public. It also asserts that the names of the applicants and the finalists should have been disclosed sooner and that the process that was followed to fill the seat was not in keeping with select board's prior practice. So there's a number of allegations in the complaint, but those are, I think, the main ones. Since the complaint was filed last week, I've begun to frame out what I believe would be an appropriate response to the complaint. And I'm happy to walk the board through what I think the key points in that response might be. Overall, the complaint is based on the idea that Kathy and Jim Flanagan together were a subcommittee within the meaning of the open meeting law and that as a result, they were subject to it and needed to post agendas, conduct their meetings in public, keep minutes, and otherwise comply with the open meeting law. In my opinion, that premise of the complaint is not accurate. The question of whether a public body has created a subcommittee that needs to comply with the open meeting law is a fact-intensive inquiry. It depends on the facts of the particular case. But it hinges on whether the public body's actions, it hinges on the public body's actions and whether intended to create a subcommittee. There's case law from the Attorney General to that effect. In this case, the select board as a board did not discuss the appointment process. It did not take any vote to create a subcommittee or otherwise delegate the interview and review process to Kathy. Instead, Kathy acted in accordance with the select board's appointment policy of longstanding, which gives the vice chair standing responsibility to engage with the interview process independently and ultimately advance finalists to a board vote. So Kathy undertook that work pursuant to the policy, as I understand it, without any discussion or vote from the full select board. I think that's crucial, and I think that defeats the argument that the two of them together formed a subcommittee for purposes of the open meeting law. One thing that I think is useful to point out, though, and I would hope the complainant might take note of, is that had it been determined earlier on or decided earlier on that Kathy and Jim together should have acted like a subcommittee for purposes of the open meeting law and posted meetings, et cetera, then the interviews of the seven applicants for this position could have been conducted in executive session pursuant to purpose eight of the open, of the, or we call purpose eight under the, of the reasons that a board can go into executive session. One is conducting preliminary screening interviews of applicants outside of public view, perfectly permissible reason to go into executive session. So although I believe in the first instance that it's not accurate to describe the two of them as a subcommittee, there is no universe where these interviews necessarily had to take place in open session. And if they had acted in accordance with the open meeting law or as if they were subject to the open meeting law, those interviews nonetheless could have been taking place in executive session. So that's point number one. In terms of the allegations in the complaint that this process departed from select board's prior practice, there are two examples, two recent examples, that we found where the exact same process, as was followed here, was followed then. Those included 2023 appointment to fill a vacancy of the Board of Assessors and a 2022 appointment to fill a vacancy on the Park and Rec Commissioners. In both of those cases, the vice chair at the time conducted interviews, not in public, not in open session, and ultimately, a joint meeting of the two boards was convened to appoint the eventual appointee. The one issue in the complaint that I think we may need to acknowledge in our response is that the names of the two finalists should have been printed in the agenda for the joint June 10th meeting. But I'll be quick to point out that those names were disclosed in the fact sheet for that agenda item in the select board's packet that was published at the same time. So there was, the information was out there at the time, and there was certainly no intent to withhold those names from public view. And finally, the discussion and vote that was held on June 10th with the Housing Authority was perfectly in accordance with the open meeting law. To my mind, the complaint does seem to, the complaint raises the argument that there should have been a broader discussion of all applicants at that meeting, but the open meeting law does not compel full discussion or consideration of every applicant for a position in the meeting where the appointment is ultimately voted. So for all of those reasons, those are the, those are the things that I would think to include in a response to the complaint on the board's behalf. In terms of process, now that the complaint has been filed, the board has 14 business days to provide the complainant with a written response. And if the board is interested in having someone provide that written response on its behalf, it needs to take a vote to that effect. What we've done recently, in my experience, when met with an open meeting law complaint, is to have the board vote to authorize me to provide a written response consistent with the responses that I've just outlined for you here. And I guess that's what I'd suggest we do here as well, if the board is inclined to authorize me to file a response on its behalf.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, can I, so I guess three points, as you were talking. I think in the response, it'll be important to distinguish between section two of the appointment policy and section three.
Yes.
So that's appointments that are just for the select board, jurisdiction, and then section three is joint appointment.
Yes.
Which, they're slightly different policies.
Yes.
In, you mentioned it could have been done in the executive session. I guess because they were publicly advertised and because all of the submissions were public, I guess I don't understand that part.
So preliminary screening interviews for any position, whether employment or appointment, can be held in executive session if the chair of the preliminary screening committee determines the impact on the town's ability to attract candidates going forward, either for that position or going forward. There is case law from the Attorney General's open meeting law database that says that it is reasonable for the chair to conclude that candidates for appointment would, the town would be less likely to attract candidates for appointed, volunteer-appointed positions if those interviews are going to take place in open sessions, subject to full public view. That's all a bit of a hypothetical because that, you know, none of that happened here. The only point that I'm trying to make there is that, to the extent the complaint asserts that, to the extent the complaint wishes that the result had been that these interviews would have been conducted in open session, that result would not necessarily have followed from an earlier determination that Kathy and Jim were subject to the open meeting law.
But even if there were executive sessions, there would have been a notice that there was an executive session.
There would have been a posting of the subcommittee noting the time and place of the meeting.
It would not have noted who the candidates were.
It would not.
It would have just noted that the subcommittee met, correct?
Correct.
Well, but in our current practice, all of the applicants were, all applications were submitted publicly. They were public. So we would have had to change our process, I think.
They were public if somebody, you know, requested them, but they weren't published without.
But they were, people could know who applied.
I mean, yeah, but because the observer asked for the names, we gave them the names, they published it.
If the names.
We didn't, we didn't proactively publish.
Had the names been published first, then the agenda likely would have included the names of the people who were interviewing that day. Had the names not been published first and we were going down that sort of hypothetical open meeting law rabbit hole, then that you could have not, it would have been permissible to not publish the names of the applicants who are being interviewed on the agenda. But again, once the names are out there, you would have published the names. In that instance, though, you still could have conducted the interviews in executive session for purposes of protecting the, you know, the applicants from having their qualifications for the position discussed in public.
And then two more things. I guess in the prior examples you listed, I think you said Park and Rec and Assessors, I think that was just one person doing it through preliminary screening, right?
I think that was a combination of one representative of the vice chair of the select board pursuant to policy and one representative of the other board in both of those two instances.
This is how we do all of our appointments across the board.
This is, this is how we do all of our appointments across the Board for all committees. The Vice Chair works with the Chair or Designee or Vice Chair of the Appointing Committee to make sure that, you know, there's, their needs are met, so on. So, all, all interviews, barring unusual circumstances, are conducted together, just in the manner that this was.
And then, just the last point. I think there's, there's no harm in being, erring on the side of openness. You know, the open meeting law isn't something that we should try to split hairs on, you know, like, is it or isn't it? If there's a doubt, let's just assume that the open meeting law applies.
This is our normal policy. So, what you're suggesting is a change from approved policy. I'm just, I don't think there, I'm unclear on what you're suggesting we should have done.
Well, I think the question is whether the open meeting law applies or not.
Correct.
If we're in doubt, I would say, let's assume it does.
Are we in doubt?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the position that it's not in doubt, and that what, the process that was followed here is consistent with the open meeting law. Now, we'll provide a response to the complainant, and ultimately, we'll get a ruling from the Attorney General. So, there will be, there will be, there will be a ruling on this. But for purposes of the response, I'm comfortable that the open meeting law was complied with here.
I'm going to make an observation, and I, we, we need to get the ruling, certainly, from the Attorney General, but I'm comfortable that our process makes sense to me. What I would observe is that if we had interviewed all candidates in open session, right? With people able to attend, other candidates could also attend the interviews of every prior candidate. I presume the quality of candidates' answers would approve across the series of interviews. That's not what we're actually trying to accomplish in an interview. So, I mean, it creates a process that could be gained, which I don't think is what we want to set ourselves up for. I think we want to understand the qualifications of individual candidates based on their merits. So, just consideration.
No, I mean, I was reading this, it seems like the charge is inconsistent. We observe the open meeting law. We don't split hairs on it. We embrace it, and I think we followed it. And then, our own appointment process, our own longstanding, as a longstanding appointment process, was used. So, I fail to see the concern. So, I would hope that you would write a, you know, a rebuttal to it.
Kathy, anything you want to add?
No, I appreciate, Chris, your work on, on this, very helpful.
Anything else?
So, we need a vote to designate authority to, Chris, to respond to the open meeting law complaint that the Board has received. Can I make that motion?
So, move. Second?
Excellent. All right. Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Committee reports. Kevin?
I'm scrolling.
Okay. Let us know, let us know. Don't let me rush you. Well, then...
That also means we have to adjourn afterwards, so let's take our time. I'm still scrolling.
Bring it on. No, you're not. I see it.
Okay. Memorial Park Trustees have met. The lights will be on for the fourth, after the Fourth of July fireworks. Stormwater Working Group is still going at hammer and tongs. This is going to be a very interesting piece of work. This is, this is, I think we're making great progress. I'm very optimistic about it.
When do you anticipate we'll have a report from the Stormwater Working Group?
Kate?
The DPW team is working on a background memo, so that should be soon, and the committee intends to...
Mid-July, mid-July.
So, late next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
July 22nd, July 22nd. There'll be, you're going to probably hear a lot about water at that meeting. And then, we are still aiming to get this done for October town meeting.
Mary Ann has a question.
I was going to ask a Memorial Park Trustees question.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a reason that hasn't rotated to Heidi? Or did we make a decision? Did I just miss this?
Turns out, they like me a lot. No, no.
Sure, but...
I, I, I'm out four nights this week. I didn't have the bandwidth to take on any more meetings, and Kevin was kind enough to stay for a year.
Stay. I have to go get sworn in.
So, that could be good, too? Or we could think about, structurally, does this make sense to be in a different place? But I'm going to observe that I had a couple of rounds where I didn't do that. And I think they are an interesting committee on their own, is what I would say. And it is worthwhile for members of the Board, at some point, to gain some appreciation for that particular committee, so...
Yeah, well, I think one of the things on that subject, one of the things that we, I've asked to be on our goals list for the summer is to discuss how we allocate committee assignments, because there's just so many, and there's just only five of us. And it's, it's getting a little crowded on the calendar. And so, potentially, if there were other, there were some accommodations that we could find, then I would be able to attend that as well. But it's just, there's too much.
There's too many committees.
There's too many committees.
That's, that's what I would say.
There's too many committees, and maybe they don't all have to have a Select Board member. So, it's something that we need to look at across the Board, for sure.
They're a good group.
Thank you, Kevin.
They're lovely group, yes.
All right. And then, Josh, you're on Stormwater. Anything to add?
No. But Chris Seep is a big help.
Yes, yes. And we're meeting tomorrow night, too. And then, finally, brand, seal and branding. We, the committee met today. We went over an iteration we got from the illustrator, and we have to mark it up and send it back in revisions, which we expect to do. I mean, this is now one rounds of revisions.
And when do we think we're going to see that?
You're asking a lot of hard questions.
I know.
Well, we have to mark it up, and I think a couple of weeks.
This summer.
This summer?
We're working on a background memo for that, too.
Awesome. Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
The Large House Committee did meet while we were in the off-leash dog hearing last night. So, unless you are Superwoman, I presume neither of us have watched that meeting to find out what we missed, so...
Yes, we have not, but...
I have not, for sure.
I know that they were, that the previous meeting was the public forum, and so I assume that at least a good portion of that was digesting the information that came from that public forum. Any others?
Okay. The Council of Economic Advisers met on June 13th and welcomed a whole bunch of new members, and, which was very exciting, and heard from Lee Newman about new developments happening or potentially happening in town, and talked a lot about the impact that that might have, and how the Council of Economic Advisers might participate and aid the Planning Department and work on those things together. As Mary Ann mentioned, the Large House Review Committee met twice since our last meeting. And then, last night, this body was at the Off-Leash Dog Park Pilot Public Forum at the Memorial Park Fieldhouse, and really appreciated everyone, both online and in the room, who turned out to discuss the potential pilot. And, which I didn't say last night, but I was remiss, Park and Recs really did a great job following the Select Board's instruction on moving forward and finding a plan, putting together a plan. See how it eventually pans out, you know, after we've digested all the information. But they did a really nice job putting it together, and it's much appreciated, because it's hard work. That's all I have.
It must be Kevin's favorite time of the evening.
Well, this is awesome. We forgot Juneteenth.
Oh, Juneteenth. That's right. That's right. Juneteenth.
Yes, thank you. That was a wonderful event, a really good turnout. And, and I selected some great poems for people to read, and we had great speakers. I hope for bigger crowds every year, because it's always very intimate, which is nice, but more than earlier.
All right. Well, Kate, this was a fun meeting. Especially your tortured looks when everyone's praising you. But it's, it's a sad one. I've learned so much from you. Won't go into it all again, but it really, it'll be missed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We could start singing "This Is the Song That Never Ends."
We're waiting you out.
If only we had Marcus. He would sing.
He would. Motion?
On this last official night at Kate's last official Select Board meeting, I do move that we adjourn.
Second?
All right.
Discussion?
No, no discussion. Not on you. Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I vote aye.
Read it, too. Read it, too. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.